I serve as Vice Chair of the Alabama Independent Conference Dallas County Chapter. And I bring greetings on behalf of all the nation. And thank you so much for coming out tonight. Tonight is a great night because the topic and the candidates that are giving themselves up for service is an area that all of us, all of us can say that we're passionate about, and that's our children. And that's our children. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and pause and go ahead and give acknowledgement to the person who made all this possible, who used up strength day after day, and that's your reverence to God. We're gonna ask this Gabe Brown to come and render this invitation.
Please prepare your heart and mind for prayer. Please by grace as we go to the floor. Father God, in the name of Jesus' will, we just thank you. For this is the day that you have made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. God, we thank you for allowing us to come together tonight for such a time as this, God. God, we thank you for allowing us to assemble so that we can understand what these candidates have to say on their platform, God. We allow, we thank you for allowing this forum to take place, God. And God, we ask you to have your divine way, God. And God, before we start this forum, we want to just look upon our children and our ministers and staffs that they go make the school on next week, God. God, we ask you right now just to come in with your blood and carry your angels around our mountain, God. Let go her calm and day to come upon you, God. God, we ask you right now just to give them what they need to learn, give them wisdom, give them knowledge, understanding, God. Touch the hearts of the teachers, God. Give them compassion for our children, God. God, we thank you right now for, we know that all things work together for the good of them and love you, God. So God, we tell you thank you right now in advance for what you're gonna do. Now, we also thank you in advance right now, Father God, for the unity that we will have on tonight, Father God. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we ask you to combine every discord right now and send it back to the people there where you come from, God. And God, we thank you right now for you being God and God alone, God. And when it's all said and done, God, we're gonna give you the glory, we're gonna give you the honor, we're gonna give you the praise, in Jesus' name and prayer amen.
Thank you so much, wow. At this time, we're gonna ask the Vice Chair of Youth and Affairs for ABC Dallas County Chapter, Mr. Mark Neely, to come and present our moderators and go over our rules and format. Let me begin everyone. Your moderator this evening is going to be, he first they come and you can ask him if you're ready on what. We'll stick to the same format. We'll stick to the same format as before for school board members, um, school board candidate. Platform, first your platform, the introduction is gonna have two minutes. And we'll remind you, if you go over your time, you'll know it, because your microphone will go off. You'll have two minutes for platform introduction. You'll then go into a Q and A segment. That will be a one-minute response. And you'll have a closing statement, one and a half minute per candidate. And him, you'll go through it after the statement, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At this time, we will let each candidate introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone. I am Tanya Miles, and I'm going to come up for District Four of Selma City School Board. I've served on Selma City School Board for the past eight and a half years. I'm a little bit of a rabbi. I'm an educator of thirty-one years. And when I go to the table over in Selma City, I take my knowledge with me. Everything that goes on because of the position that I hold in Dallas County School District, everything that the superintendent knows in Selma City, I know it. And I try to make sure that when my fellow board members are voting, that they're voting with knowledge, because I try to keep them informed, keep them informed with the laws, making sure that we're following the laws. When we came on to Selma City School Board, we were under state takeover. On December fourteenth of seventeen, they removed us from state takeover, and we were in state takeover for several years. One of them being finances, one of them being academics. And I can probably sit here and say, over the eight, over the past ten and a half years, we've gotten that right. We are solid in our finances and our academics are growing. When we came on to the board, we had a, um, a state report card grade of a sixty-eighth, now we have a seventy-ninth. And we had ninety percent of our third grade students this year to pass the A-CAP test, which that was a part of the Liberty Act. That was a part of Liberty Act. And so we're proud of that as well. That's an academic achievement that we're proud to stand out. And we also had a student in the district that threw a first score. But we're in Selma City, we're moving forward, and we're just so proud of the things that are taking place. We just brought in Dr. Scott, I'm the superintendent, and he's doing an awesome job. He's been with us since March. And he's coming in, moving and shaking. Tuesday, we have a hot board meeting where we just passed a strategic plan, a solid strategic plan for the next five years to lead Selma City Forward. And it touches on our buildings, it touches on our finance.
Okay, hello everyone. My name is Brittany Howser, and I am one of the candidates for the Selma City School Board, District Four, which consists of Board Six and Seven. I'm a mother, I'm a mentor, and I am a community advocate. I'm also a newer, not just a talker. I'm a true believer that when our children are their wholesale, when their whole selves are supported, they will truly have everything they need to get to the next level. Because our children are stakeholders. When our students are whole, they are confident, mentally, mentally healthy, and empowered. When they're whole, they level up, they step in their power, and they own their future. Our recent ratings in the test scores, in the test scores, is really good, and it just shows that progress is possible. And that should actually be the norm. It shows that our students are capable. But it's not just the test scores, and that's what I bring to, what I claim to raise the board, diversity. True success means supporting the whole child through strong system, family engagement, and opportunities that prepare them for life, not just in the classroom, but beyond the classroom. When they are home, they choose college, entrepreneurship, or whatever they put their minds to. This is how we be our leaders. This is how we shape positive contributions to the city. And this is how we keep our kids coming back to Selma and wanting to get back to the city that raised them. My five key pillars of my platform are educators. We must support those who shape our future, leaders. We need systems built on integrity, students, our students deserve to rise, lead, and succeed. Families, students to stay strong and, and policy. We need policies that work grounded in transparency, equity, and accountability. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tammy Shannon Mall, candidate for school board District Three. I'm married to Marvin Mall. I have three daughters and three grandsons. I'm the daughter of the first Black City Councilman, one of the first Black City Council for the city of Salem, Alabama, the Reverend Lorenzo Harrison. And the daughter of order Thomas Shannon, an original civil rights foot soldier. So I was born and raised to serve. I served as career coach for Dallas County School District. I served previously as a career coach for Selma City and Dallas County School Districts together at one point in time. I have worked in elementary, secondary, and collegiate education, post-secondary, municipal and federal government. I have taught on the collegiate level and worked for the U.S. Congress. I'm ready to serve our children, for they are our future, they are our only choice. When it comes to my platform, it's simple. Our children, our only choice, our future. I developed the first youth apprenticeship program in the state of Alabama for a school district. Dallas County and Selma City Schools were the only, were the first, and I don't know now, we have three other systems now in the state. But they were the first to have a youth apprenticeship program. I was tasked to develop that program. So again, I'm ready to serve. I have worked in Congress, I've worked local and state government, so I understand policymaking.
Well, my name is Kameesh Alarad, and most of you guys know me as such. I'm running because I'm different than everyone else on this channel. I'm a parent and I've been an advocate. I'm not an educator. I'm not trying to be an educator. But we see as average parents in this system dealing with our children, that we are lost. We have no voice. We have no real, because I've come to many city, county, um, city board, Selma City School Board, many meetings. And they would ignore us, Ms. Miles included. And I'm not calling anybody else, I'm just being honest. And I've had other parents before this day, and since we have been running for this position, come to me with those same issues. And it's almost as if certain people get into office just to put their children in positions and their family in position. But that's the problem. See, my mother, my grandmother, she worked right here in this factory, making two dollars thirty-five cents an hour. And most people would say that I don't belong on this stage, but that's wrong. And when we talk about all kids, we deserve the best education, I'm an example of all kids. I'm an example of that. Head start, where someone came out and said, "Look, you deserve an opportunity to get the best education." I wasn't tasked by a job to do anything. When I had the Sunshine Alarad Center, and we had Monty Brook for the pre-K at Sofia King Kingston, it wasn't my job, it was my passion. It wasn't my job when I decided to host the Easter Egg Hunt and Pong Sunday event at Ronnie Sharp Park. It wasn't my job, it was my passion, that kids should always feel special. One of my events, we made sure all the kids received an Easter basket. And the those who came late still went home with enough to fill a basket. See, I'm not doing things because someone tasked me or someone paid me. I'm doing it out of my pocket, out of my heart, and out of just straight passion. And it's time that we as parents have a voice on this board.
All right, thank you for those questions. All right, we get ready for possibly the answer or statement, and you will have one minute to respond. And the first question is, how would you make sure students with disabilities are fully supported in their classrooms and school environments? Start with this, Sunshine.
That's a great question. I believe that no matter what disability, because there's a lot of adults with disabilities that we don't really know about, and they're functioning well in society. And sometimes kids with disabilities get pushed away, and they say they have these great individual assessment plans for each one of these kids. But a lot of times, they're not getting all the services they need, and I know they're not getting the counseling services they need. I know when we had an experience with an arson attack, my kids needed counseling. But I got ridiculed for being late. I wasn't supported by the system. My children wasn't supported by the system. So I felt like that was, at a time, a disability, a trauma-induced situation. So until we started looking at the whole child, like Ms. Howser said, all of them, in my capacity, could have, has a possibility to have a mental disability, we can't decide who has it. And we really can't pinpoint it out in society. We can't say that child is, that child is this. So we have to teach them all as if they are the scholars that they can be.
First, I would make sure that the parent knew what the laws are. A lot of our parents don't know what the laws are when it comes to disability. A lot of our parents don't know what rights they have. So for me, how I would make sure that our children with disabilities were addressed and got the best services, the first thing is to make sure that the parents know what their rights are and what rights their children have.
Okay, I would make sure, and moving back to the laws, I would make sure that the community, the schools, the other students are aware of the disability. I would make sure everyone is following the law in regards to the specific disability. I would make sure they're compliant with that certain disability. And I'd make sure, I feel like educating everyone around the student, making sure the student is comfortable, and making sure everyone is aware of the situation. I would make sure we have accessibility, everything we need within the school, make sure the student even have everything he or she needs within the home. So I feel like even in the neighborhoods, I definitely think it's community, uh, community effort.
When it comes to different about students with disabilities, that they have to follow, so. Maybe there are only people that need to know about child disability, they're the ones that know. When it comes to the law, when a child is identified as receiving a disability, when that parent comes, or when the parent accepts the invitation to come and give us permission for screening, the first thing that that parent gets when they walk into that room is the parent's rights. If anyone has a right to the child that falls from the IDPA, and those are our students with disabilities. And this does not mean that you have a mental disability, you could be a gifted child, you could be a child of five or four, that may be a child that might have a broken arm, you might need to put a plan in place for somebody to write your work, you could use your hand as a broker. All that follows the IDPA umbrella. And those children and those parents, they have their rights. If a parent comes to the IDPA and they visit you with anything in their phone, they have a right to deny. So when it comes to a child with disability.
All right, thank you. The next question. How can the school board help teachers feel more supported and gained? What role should the board play in teacher, mentoring, training, and community burnout? Starting with, starting with Ms. Miles.
First, the board is not getting to date in their operations. We know that we have teachers with issues. We support our student parents in whatever activities the NPD has in place to support our teachers. But the state of Alabama, they have a mentoring program. With every new teacher that comes into a building, they get a mentor, and they all go pay them for doing that. And so we see, we could have things to support our teachers out of the two districts that's in Selma and Dallas County. So if this teacher receives a stipend, out of all that other money we have. Because we knew it was a lot, teaching virtual, we knew that was a lot, we knew we were asking a lot. So we make sure that our teachers knew that we appreciate them.
And with all the good values of the church, so, well, I, we make sure that we have, and we want to do.
Okay. Okay, so that question, I would definitely make sure I stay knowledgeable of every teacher's situation. It may sound hard, but I would go over there and make sure I stay on top of their mental health and figure out different ways, be creative of how we can, you know, ease them, and just make sure they're comfortable, and, yeah.
Um, I don't think that Dr. Miles, in saying that all students, all the students that come in have mentors, but all of them who have mentors, I think that is talking about around, I think that's sort of, um, interesting. As a board, we are not, uh, the board is not supposed to get into state operations. But we can, I feel that we can make sure that from around the schools, stay open. That teachers continue to know that although we're not in day-to-day operations, we are concerned. We are listening here. They should still feel free today to come and talk to board members. Let us know how they feel, what's going on. And as board members, we should be in schools, visit the schools, so we can see hands-on what's going on in the schools. Not just what we're being told, we need to actually be around.
Here is the question. How can the school board help teachers feel more supported and valued? What role should the board play in teacher, mentoring, training, and community burnout?
Insurance funding is there for that. And although the state provides mentoring, I think we should, as board members, go an extra step when teachers are struggling. There's a lot on their plate. Sometimes kids are just outright disrespectful, you can't get the day started throughout the issues that's going on in the classrooms. So I think we should be more proactive in assistance and finding funding to make sure they have in-house services. And also as a board member, I think we should have teachers come up or set up a situation where we can hear the grievances as a board. No, we cannot individually deal with teacher grievances. That's probably against the law. But what we can do is when the superintendent brings us a list of fifty people that he's going to let go of, that we set aside a meeting before we agree to that list. That we go through that list and make sure it's not unreasonable circumstances, or something that we can modify, or something that we lacked in our leadership that didn't provide that teacher the opportunity to be a great or his great self. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do to mentor, and there's a lot of ways that we can.
And now we are down to the closing statement. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. Let's start with Ms. Miles. Oh, is that a question? I'm sorry, before we do that. We have one question from the audience, so who would like to ask that question? Any question?
Board. If there's a need for a loose superintendent, would y'all, would y'all be willing to support somebody alone?
If you have that question, if I don't, it's too much. Uh, yes, 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 yes. Local people, but they're there. In our last superintendent search, we had people from Florida, like from Georgia, from Andy, from Mississippi, and South Carolina. And then we had our own, Ms. Sarah Smith. Ms. Sarah Smith was mine, because I feel like she's vested in Selma City. She had a childhood in the first grade over at Andy's, one of the tenth grade at Selma, took the end of it. Her husband, I passed her here. And she's gone, she, she started off in Selma City, and left Selma City and went with the state. And then working for the state, she's transpired through this across the state of Alabama. So she had the experience to come back here and lead it, but I was just one vote. And so, yeah, local people are willing to do it because we know our people, we need to see how superintendent, on the real level, I'm a law clerk. For me myself, I didn't go on law clerk to pick up a local grant and send you twenty minutes to come out there. Because people have those concerns, and they could have a lot of issues.
I think that the answer is true, and that's the answer. Because my vote would certainly be yes. Again, vested, committed, someone who's in our community, who knows our community, who our parents know. When it comes to trust, we need to be able to trust our leaders. And when people know him, and you're walking by them day by day, your neighbors, they feel a sense of trust, or they feel a sense that they can come and talk to you. So having a superintendent who is local, of course, my vote would be yes.
And I'm agreeing with what both ladies said. In addition to that, someone who's here in Selma with us will also be most likely to understand what we're going through. So yes, my vote would be yes.
You know, I, I'm double-sided on that one. You know, I'm gonna be honest with you, why? Because just like you said about the lady who had to go away to get her honors and her flowers, sometimes we're hard on our local people a little harder. And we're not as easy on them because we have our own prejudged myths. You know what I'm saying? So it's not that I don't, I think we're against it, but that's been the problem, why we can't. Because it's something internally that won't allow us. And sometimes it's best for them to go out and develop their wings, and roll their name elsewhere, and come back and show us that maybe we made some bad choices. Because obviously, we have made some bad choices along the line. And I'm, we going back to this let, we've had so many opportunities to hide it from within, and we did not. So I don't know, because this board has been in effect for eight years, and in many times, we've had opportunities, and you've chosen people with obscure records and people with individual agendas instead of the children. So it's good to say that now. But if you guys have been in education this long, and we've been dealing with this, that's why I have a vote for someone that's not in education, that sees either outside perspective, because.
And now we're ready for, thank you. All the ladies have spoken, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes. At this time, I'm gonna make you go with you.
Okay, I would just say, again, I'm Brittany Howser, and I would say, keep an open mind. Vote Boal when choosing to leave him for District Four Selma City School Board. Vote, keep an open mind, vote Boal and vote Howser on House 3C.
Um, yes, Ms. Alarad would say, she, um, from, um, like, someone who is not an educator. I've, I've obviously been an educator. So I've sat on both sides. I've sat on the side as not being an educator, and now I'm sitting on the side as an educator. So I've seen it both ways. And I, so that when I make decisions, my decisions are not one-sided. They will be very diverse, very diverse, because I've had the opportunity to sit on both sides of the table. I've been the parent who's gone for the board. I've been the parent who has disagreed publicly with the board. And as an educator, I've also been on the side to know what's missing and what we need as educators, and what's going on within the system with our children, what our children, and. So on August twenty-sixth, vote for our children, our only choice, our future. Vote Tammy Mall.
I would let the incumbent go last, since, you know, that's for honor of being a veteran before they do. But I would just like to say, I've been in the military for twelve years, and I've seen a lot of things, and I was training in the military. And one thing about the military, training is so important. And one thing about the military, training is so important. If you don't have proper training, you can kill everybody on the ship. So we need board members that's gonna help train our staff, our board members, you know, don't, there should be classes that we go to, we shouldn't have to depend on people that work for the county for the law. We should be able to go to classes ourselves and empower ourselves with the law. I shouldn't have to depend on Ms. Miles to come from her job at Dallas County, or Ms., um, Mall from her job at Dallas County to tell me the law. I should be able to get that information for myself, and I should, and the parents should be able to know this, we shouldn't have to wait for somebody to give it to us, because they already got a job, or they're doing, so they just tell us what. And then that way, it's one-sided once again, because it's their interpretation of the law. Give everybody an opportunity of every type of lifestyle, the opportunity to be in the law. And I've been on a lot of sides of the bill, a D O T contractor working at the Pentagon. I've had a lot of roles, and I've been trained by a lot of leaders in this city, from J.R. Chestnut to Hank Sanders, to even hold good little fire roles too. So they taught me how to advocate, and I'm gonna be an advocate for all children, for the least of these, and those of us who think we are not those. And thank you. Once again, vote and let Kalisha Sunshine Ararado, let the sun shine in, let's start
South City School Board has entered the hundred line in forty-six school boards across the state of Alabama. We are proud of Alabama, the Southern Chief School Board. And we would be very proud, we would be very proud, but matter of fact, I'm a master board, I'm totally willing, you're not a board, but we're still that brand. Um, I was going to do it, I was glad to be able to come from now, and to call for the children, who are fifteen, eleven, now we're back to the people, our children, and may the world go back home, keep them in.
This concludes our first statement. Please give all candidates another round of applause. And please give our moderator a moment to round the call in. We're gonna take about two minutes to make the transition to our school board presidents, candidates, and we will continue in about two and a half minutes.